Of course.
It's online.
Oh, okay, alright.
I don't know.
Can I white it out and put my name on it too? I was way too busy today for that.
Change the question a little bit.
No, I'm sorry, but I just deleted it. I'm not in there.
I was supposed to get you to sign that form.
Oh, okay. That's making me look bad. I haven't even done-
They haven't even looked it up.
I've seen, I've got two emails too, that's how bad it is. Took your 27th one.
You have to make eighty-seven quips, which is all I did without listening to it.
These chairs are really hurtin'. Oh, let's wait a minute till that rain stops.
It was just pouring in kindness, of course, I got in the traffic circle. Coming from kindness, it's always long.
Yeah.
It's kind of like the hospital was, somebody's driving. Which, you know, maybe that's a good thing. When the weather is like this, but. It gets slow.
Hopefully it'll die down a bit.
Did you bring yours?
I did.
Oh, the recommendation.
Yep, yep.
He's expected. Yes.
Are on their way?
No, they're waiting so we can-
Oh, 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 okay, that's what I was waiting for. I'm sorry, that's time.
Yeah, let's do it.
Let's do this.
Just in back, just in case, the, the one on the top, the, the, uh, in case, you know, anybody's on top.
Oh, are we using this?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're using it, you don't need to move it.
That should pick you up.
Yeah, they'll pick you up. Here, just go ahead and sweep that, because sometimes it's pretty hot. And then this is our backup here.
Will it pick him up too?
Yeah, well.
We don't put those off and on, huh?
Okay.
Is it on already?
And Gary, if you guys experience any problem, or you want to start walking up this way, we'll pause and let you do what you need to do.
Is it on already? Do you want me to put over here, or then, but Dr. Bob wouldn't have it?
No, we're, no, we're good.
No, we're good. Okay, it doesn't have anything to talk about.
It should pick it up, they're pretty powerful, they're pretty potent.
Okay. Speak up.
Good afternoon, I call the Moore County Board of Education regular business meeting, Monday, April eighth, to order. Is there a call to the closed session?
I move the board enter closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A, 1A3, and A6, and General Statute 115C-319, and General Statute 132-1.7, to discuss confidential personnel matters, to consult with the board attorney, and preserve the attorney-client privilege, and to prevent the disclosure of confidential personnel and school security information, including a discussion of state versus Williams, Moore County Superior Court, number seventeen, CRS 52818.
There's a motion on the table, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. We will go to recess until-
Into closed session.
Into closed session.
Closed session.
Go into closed session and we'll be back at six thirty. Perfect.
Yeah.
Doon's equipment, preseason equipment. He's doing his.
Well, the white socks have started too, we're into the white socks.
I call the Moore County Board of Education Regular Business Meeting back to order. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second. Motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried. Before I ask Ms. McNeil to come up with her students, I would like to introduce the Union Pines NJROTC, who will present their colors. Please rise for the march on of the colors and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Freeze and cover.
It is my pleasure tonight to present to you two wonderful students from Sand Hills Farm Life Elementary. Ryanne Threet will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. His mother is Ilham Threet, a training specialist in Special Operations Command in Fort Bragg. Our inspiration will be given by Addison Peavly, whose father Will Peavly is the US Army, stationed in Savannah, Georgia for ten years with the 75th Ranger Regiment. Now works at USASOC, currently stateside training at Fort Bragg.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May be seated.
Good evening, my name is Addison Peavly. My family moved here when I was in second grade. Now I am a fifth grader at Sand Hills Farm Life. I have been so lucky to spend last four of my elementary years there. I think of my school as one of the best around. We have wonderful teachers, awesome administration, great opportunities to get things to get ready for middle school, and a military club and counselor that supports military students. First of all, let's talk about the teachers. I feel like all of my teachers at SFL have cared about their students. This year, my teachers, Mrs. Manning and Mrs. Sobey, combined and divided their two classes based on personalities and not levels. They also do project-based learning. This helps us better understand a certain skill. For instance, this year, my favorite project was a bottle buddy project in ELA. We had to choose a famous African-American, research them, write an essay, and make a model of them out of a bottle. I liked learning more about the famous African-Americans and seeing everyone's bottle buddy on display in the library. My math teacher, Mrs. Manning, did a challenging budgeting project. It was fun because it also helped us learn how to add and subtract decimals. In science, we also observed a mold terrarium for one week. We learned how and why mold grows. SFL teachers are wonderful. The administration at Farm Life is awesome. Our assistant principal, Mrs. Dreesen, is willing to do crazy things for student or class or even school achievement. Like one time she kissed a snake because our school read 103,355,682 words. She also encourages students through contests and challenges. For example, this year, the fifth grade did a STEM contest and my class won. And she also holds a words read challenge for each grade and my favorite, a 24 game contest, which I won. During our Booster-Thon fundraiser, Ms. McNeil and Mrs. Dreesen both promised to do something crazy if we reached our goal of $20,000. Lucky for us, we raised almost $33,000. So Mrs. Dreesen got slimed a couple of weeks ago and now Ms. McNeil's planning to sing on the roof of our school Thursday. The students can't wait. See what I mean? The administration at SFL really is awesome. SFL has lots of great opportunities for students. Our school lets third, fourth, and fifth graders do the announcements every morning. On Wednesdays, Mr. Wolf, our school's staff, helps fifth graders record the announcements with a green screen for the school to watch on Fridays. Fourth and fifth graders also have important duties at school, like flag duty and door duty. Our school also has lots of different clubs. We have a robotics club, a battle of the books team, a K kids club, a garden club, and a student council. Finally, we have another club, but it's a special club, for military kids only. My brother and I both go there. In military club, we eat lunch, play games, make crafts, do activities, read stories, and just talk. Sometimes being a military kid is tough. We have to move often, we miss time with family, and I miss snuggling with my daddy. Knowing that other kids have gone through this and that our military counselor is there for us makes me feel more comfortable. The kids at Sand Hills Farm Life Elementary School strive to uphold the Trojan expectations. We recite them every morning on the announcements. They are to T, treat others the way you want to be treated, R, remember your manners, O, own up and take responsibility, J, join in to help your team, A, always do your best, and N, needness counts. If you take all of the first letter of each word and at the beginning of each expectation, you will spell Trojan. And I am proud to be a Sand Hills Farm Life Trojan.
May we have a moment of silence, please? I'd like you to please keep in your thoughts Dr. Seth Powers, our director of Student Services, mother who passed away this past week. Mike Yannick. Michael, please join Chair Wallen Miller and Vice Chair Carter in the front, please. Mike Yannick with Southern Pines Elementary is this month's Engage, Inspire, Succeed Certified Staff Honoree. Mr. Yannick teaches fifth grade at Southern Pines Elementary School. One of the keys to his effectiveness is the warm and caring classroom atmosphere that he provides every day. He takes a very personal interest in all of his students and frequently celebrates accomplishments with them. He loves teaching math and enjoys sharing his love of math with his students. Mr. Yannick is quick to share that he believes that every child can learn and be successful and that it is essential to build positive relationships with his students. Mr. Yannick is a staff native of Pennsylvania and holds both bachelor's and master's degrees in education. Mr. Yannick has been an educator for 13 years and currently lives in Hope County with his wife and his daughter, Olivia. Mike, thank you for what you've done for our students and for our children. Would Principal Dale Bowie, family members, and those in support of Mike, please stand and be recognized? One thing more I want to tell you about Mike. I saw him the other night getting an award. Mike was also the Teacher of the Year at Southern Pines Elementary this year. Keisha McBride, would you please come up front and stand with Chair Miller and Vice Chair Carter? Keisha McBride with Southern Middle School is this month's Engage, Inspire, Succeed Classified Staff Honoree. Ms. McBride is the school's IT assistant and ready and willing to help anyone at our school. She has become somewhat of an expert in all things technology. Ms. McBride is happy to help staff members, parents, or students with technology issues. She attends all ballgames, concerts, and other events and their presence reinforces to our students that she really cares about their success, both in and out of the classroom. Ms. McBride welcomes our students to school each day as she supervises the main hallway. She inspires all around her to succeed with dragon pride. Congratulations, Keisha, and thank you for what you do for our children. Would Principal Marcy Cooper, family members, and those in support of Keisha, please stand and be recognized? Vilma Mendez-Cumbarte. Columbarde. From Northmore High School is this month's Engage, Inspire, Succeed Volunteer Honoree. Ms. Mendez graciously volunteers her time to mentor and tutor the school's English language learners. She takes her role very seriously and thoroughly prepares for her morning sessions. Additionally, she offers her transition services in order to facilitate parent meetings. She is committed to the success of the students she mentors and is always a welcoming face in Mustang country. Congratulations, Vilma, and thank you for what you do for our children. Would Principal Jenny Purvis, family members, and others in support of Vilma, please stand and be recognized? Kelly Williams, please come down front with Chair Wallen Miller and Vice Chair Libby Carter. Kelly Williams is this month's Engage, Inspire, Succeed Student Honoree. Kelly is ranked first in the class of 2019 at Northmore and will be the first Moore senior to graduate with an associate's degree from Sand Hills Community College. She is a member of the cross-country and track and field teams, as well as the Spanish and Beta Clubs, and is president of the Future Business Leaders of America. Kelly plans to attend University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill, major in biology, and then go on to medical school to become a pediatrician. Congratulations, Kelly. With Principal Jenny Purvis, family members, and those in support of Kelly, please stand and be recognized. This concludes our recognitions.
Madam Chair, let's do a mic check here. Chief Frye, can you hear us okay?
It's hard.
Okay, good.
Is the mic on?
We're gonna need to project.
I can't hear.
Mike Irish, can you hear us okay?
I can't hear you.
Okay. We don't have a monitor up here, so I think if I think the audience can hear us, fine. We're just having a hard time hearing because we don't have a speaker for us up here, so we just ask speakers to, you know, speak out a little bit so we can hear. At this time, Madam Chair, it is my pleasure to introduce Steve Johnson to provide us with our program highlight, and he's got friends.
Yes, brought a lot of friends tonight. Dr. Grimace, board members, we are thrilled to be able to give you an update on our digital teaching and learning grants here in Moore County schools. The total award amount since last spring of $480,000 plus, a lot of work being done in the county with STEM and engineering education throughout K12. And as you said, I have brought some friends with me. I'm going to detail the K5 Innovation Academy with Ms. Pope and Ms. Bullard, and then Ms. Holmes and Mr. Morris will talk to you about the implementation grant, our ACE cohort. So, our K5 Innovation Academy this year has started off with bang. The purpose of this Innovation Academy is for educators across the state to come to Moore County and see the work we're doing in our K5 classrooms in regards to STEM and engineering tied to our content standards. There is two prongs to this effort. There is a yearly conference that is actually coming up on May the 3rd at Pinecrest High School from 9:30 until 12, where we have over 200 educators to come and see our students in action and also learn how to do this in their own classrooms through professional development. And the second prong is what Ms. Bullard and Ms. Pope are gonna tell you a little bit more about is our site visits. We have had folks, leadership teams from throughout North Carolina, come to High Falls Elementary, Robbins Elementary, Aberdeen Primary, and Aberdeen Elementary, to come and see the great things happening in their classroom and to see how this actually works in the school, not a dog and pony show, or actually doing this work, and they come to see and learn more about how it's being done. So, our first site visit, as I said, Robbins, High Falls, Aberdeen Primary, Aberdeen Elementary, and Cameron, those were chosen as starting points. We could have picked any schools in the county doing this work, but we wanted to represent the diversity of Moore County schools, and this was a good starting point for us. And like I say, a wide range of attendees, all the way from classroom teachers, principals, curriculum admin. We've had university faculty from education departments come and visit. We've also had folks from DPI, including Dr. Petrie Martin, our State Deputy Superintendent. And I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Pope to give you an idea of what the visit looks like whenever they come.
Good evening. The digital visits that happen at the schools are really exciting. When they first get there, they meet and greet with student leaders, and then Mr. Johnson and myself give them background knowledge of the K5 engineering strands and the robotics journey that were taking place in Moore County schools. They also participate in engineering strand activity, and quickly adults turn into children who are eager to participate, and they get so excited, and Mr. Johnson does a really great job facilitating that. While we discuss the digital competencies that we're seeing with the critical thinking skills that's taking place, the team then visits classrooms for approximately 15 minutes each, and before they go into those classrooms, they receive from teachers who recorded on a flipgrid, information about what led up to that lesson and what the targeted outcomes of that lesson is. In the classrooms, they get to talk with the children, they get to participate in the activities. When we adjourn back, they get to meet with the teachers of the classrooms that they visited, and they get to ask questions and look for what they saw during those activities. And it becomes a collaboration period where our teachers share their expertise and instruction that's taken place. It's a really exciting day, the energy level is up, and the journey that Moore County schools and our school sites is shared, and we're impacting children across North Carolina. Ms. Bullard's gonna come forward, and she's gonna let you know the positive impact that this has had on the culture of the schools.
Good evening. The impact that the STEM site visits have had on our school culture is amazing. Students have learned to be able to articulate clearly what they are working on to complete strangers. It has served as a validation for the work that teachers and students alike are doing. The STEM site visits have created an environment in which teachers have become leaders of
Thank you. I'm gonna talk about the implementation grant, which is the ACE cohort. This grant builds on the knowledge and skills our students are developing in K5 and carries it into the secondary grades. We currently have our first cohort of 25 very talented secondary master teachers from grade 6 through 12. These teacher leaders span all content, core content areas, and one foreign language area. The name ACE, which is the acronym for Active Collaborative Engagement, chosen for this cohort, symbolizes the work done this school year and in the coming school years that's gonna happen. These teacher leaders are working to develop highly engaging mini projects that incorporate digital thinking, design thinking, the four Cs, with a clear focus on the standards in which data shows consistent weaknesses. The grant pays for subs and stipends for professional development that has been occurring during the school year. This includes three pullout days, and we have one coming up on- our last one coming up on Wednesday, and three Saturdays. ACE cohort members during the summer are gonna develop the mini projects during the week of June 17th through the 20th. They're gonna present at the Moore Learning Conference in August 2019, and then also they're gonna use these projects in their classrooms in the next school year, supported by the DIFs. I'm now gonna turn it over to Austin Morse, who is a social studies teacher at Pinecrest High School, and he is also a member of the first ACE cohort.
Good evening. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak briefly as a teacher member of the ACE cohort about the outstanding opportunities this program provides to us. There are many, but I will attempt to be brief tonight, and I do thank the board, our leadership in the community, for this opportunity to talk about something very positive happening in our classrooms. There are many benefits. I'd like to talk about three tonight. First, professional development and technological training as teachers allows us to learn about research-proven strategies as well as the latest tools that allow us to effectively reach and teach today's students with interesting and engaging lessons. We also have a tremendous opportunity for collaboration, and this has been a really, for me, a valuable, a rich and enriching program because it has brought me together with teachers from across the county, from secondary levels in middle and in high school, and as Ms. Holmes said, from all different disciplines, to really share our love and passion for teaching, as well as the strategies that have worked best for us in our classrooms. And we have enjoyed working well together. We've met together on Saturdays. I've met with the team most recently this morning before school to talk about how we could bring new tools like augmented reality. We've been trained on engineering tools like robots and drones that we don't normally get the opportunity to use traditionally as high school teachers. And that has been a wonderful experience for me to really sort of have my horizons broadened in terms of ways to reach today's students. Finally, this has been a great opportunity for us to give back to Moore County schools, teachers, and students by creating lessons, the many lessons that Ms. Holmes mentioned, which we're gonna write curriculum that can be reused to bring these research-proven, engaging, interesting, and effective lessons to students around the county. So, this impact will not just stop with us, but will actually go on to create repeatable, reusable lessons that can be used in any of our secondary schools. So, I'm very grateful to have been able to be a part of this program, and thank you for the opportunity to talk about it for a moment tonight.
And I will mention, our hardest engineering task was putting together an eight-minute presentation about a ton of work that is happening. There's just so much work being done by our teachers, our DIFs, our principals. My clicker is dead. If you'll hit me with the next slide, please. Thank you very much. And as Austin said, one thing that we talked about whenever we had the implementation, the first cohort together, they are building things that do not exist right now. These are high school teachers that have searched for these kind of things online, engaging projects with kids and digital learning, and they're just not there and available at the grasp. And so, this is something that's gonna benefit our teachers across the board. Our next steps for these grants for our K5 Innovation Academy, I mentioned it at the start, on May 3rd, we're gonna have our conference at Pinecrest High School. We invite you all to come and see the work in action. We also have site visits lined up for the fall, and they're gonna start expanding to all of our K5 schools. Like I said, they're all doing the work, and so we're gonna start expanding the site visits to all our schools. And for the Active Collaborative Engagement, we're actually opening up cohort number two. It is a two-year grant, so Austin's a part of cohort one, and now we get another 24 or 25 teachers that are gonna be impacted next year to do the same work and spread throughout the county. And so, that's where we are on those two grants and our next steps. And finally, before we leave it for questions, I do want to recognize, we invited folks that have supported this work to come tonight, and some of us, some have joined us tonight, so I would just like to turn and anyone that has had a site visit in their classroom or a DIF that has supported it, or a principal that's been a part of it, if you could please Thank you, and we're done, and we can accept any questions from the board.
Well, I have to say, this sounds exciting. What have the students been telling you about the program? How have they been reacting?
Well, I'll take that, or anyone else, or the teachers can say that too, but the reactions we've gotten have been interesting. When we go into classrooms, they are so engaged in the work, the visitors are hardly noticed, and so they come right in, and the visitors come and be a part of it. And honestly, the thing that keeps coming back to us is this is what we do. It's not a big-time visit, it's not a big to-do for the students, actually. They love having the visitors there and showing them what they can do, but it's nothing out of the ordinary, out of their normal day.
And I'd like to ask, who's learning the most? The students or the teachers?
Again, I'm answering all the questions. The teachers have really grown a lot, and the principals have really grown in their abilities, too. It's been really great to see all the way how they're doing it. And the teachers, one thing I'll note on that question is that at Robbins Elementary, just as an example, every time we've done a site visit there, different teachers have stepped up. So, we haven't used repeat teachers throughout the building, they're just all stepping up and getting excited about it, and I don't know if Kim... I don't know if anyone wants to expand on that, but that's my answer to their, they would answer better than me.
How many, how many teachers or how many participants do you have in cohort one, and how many do you expect the cohort to?
We wanted 24, but we had 25 that were great, and so we took 25 in the first cohort, and then we expect 24 in the next cohort next year.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Steve, I want to let you know that I sent a copy of your presentation to four representatives that are sponsoring a bill tomorrow in the House Education K-12 meeting at 1 o'clock. The bill they're presenting is 522, it has to do with grants for digital learning in the state. So, I sent them all copies, I invited them, and I also invited Senator McGinnis, Representative Jamie Bowles, and Alan McNeil to come May the 3rd. And Senator McGinnis has already agreed that he will be here in the morning of May the 3rd to watch what's happening.
Wonderful. Thank you for sending that invite. Last thing I'll say or mention is that the folks that are coming to visit have visited lots of schools before, and the main feedback we got is they know a fake when they can see it, and they know that this is real and it's happening in our school, so that's a really good affirmation from those that come to visit.
I had the opportunity to attend the site visit at Robbins Elementary, and the visitors were just blown away with student engagement and just the level of interaction between the teacher and the students, and basically the students were just taking over the plan, and they were just blown away just seeing that, and they could tell that it wasn't staged, like you were saying, that it was real, day-to-day activity.
Wonderful. Thank you for that.
I think it's interesting to point out, too, that one of our Teachers of the Year was from High Falls Elementary, is one of your, one of your people, and I, Carrie, and I happened to see her and her group in Raleigh when I was up there for another legislative meeting.
Yeah, we've got a lot of great leaders in the county, teachers and just alike, and Carrie. We are so excited for Carrie. We love Shannon Leno, Carrie, she's doing an awesome job.
Are there any other questions or comments? Well, thank you very much, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
We appreciate the report and the update. All right, board members, we have the consent agenda. Is there a motion on the table to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments about the consent agenda? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, 7-0. Dr. Grimace, superintendent's report?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Madam Chairman, members of the board, I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce to you Mr. Andrew Cox, who has taken over as Executive Officer for Budget and Finance for Moore County Schools effective today. Mr. Co- Andrew, if you'd come on over here so that we know who we're talking about. Why don't you stand over here so all the folks over here can see you as well, get a good look at. Mr. Cox comes to us after serving a three-year tenure as Chief Financial Officer for Elizabeth City Pasquetank Schools. Those three years with Elizabeth City Pasquetank were sandwiched between two tenures with the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. During his first tour of duty with DPI, he served for 10 years in multiple capacities that culminated in his assignment as Section Chief for the school financial reporting. As Section Chief, Andrew oversaw the accounting, consulting, collection, and reporting of financial data on nearly $12 billion in expenditures, data on more than 1.5 million students, and all reconciliations for the state public school fund and federal grants to North Carolina. Last fall, he returned to DPI in order to be closer to his permanent family home in Harnett County. During his second brief stint with DPI, Andrew served as the department's budget manager, overseeing all funding streams that flow through DPI to local education agencies. In that capacity, he implemented efficiencies and improvements in the budgeting and allotment processes, and he maintained the funding system for the calculation and equitable distribution of state and federal allotments and grants to local education agencies and other independent public schools. While Andrew quickly regained the confidence of his DPI team members, he harbored a persistent yearning to serve in public, local public school finance. So fortunately for Moore County Schools, he took great interest in our vacancy and proved himself to be our most superior candidate for the position that has been filled so ably in recent years by Mike Bundy and Mike Griffin. Andrew holds a Bachelor of Arts in Business Communication from North Carolina State University and an MBA from East Carolina University. His wife's name is Lisa, and they have a four-year-old daughter named Chloe. Please join me in welcoming Mr. Andrew Cox as the new Executive Officer for Budget and And Madam Chairman, that completes my monthly report. I remain at your service.
Thank you, Dr. Grimace. Ms. Carter?
We now go to the time for public address to the board. A reminder that time for each speaker is limited to three minutes. There is no yielding of time to other speakers. The purpose of public address is for the board to hear from members of the public. By policy, the board will not respond to speakers during the meeting. Speakers are asked to be respectful and refrain from discussing concerns or complaints about individual personnel or students. All comments should be respectful and civil for ordinary rules of order and decorum. I'm gonna ask for the first five speakers to come down to our front row here and expedite the matter just a little bit. In this order, Mitch Williamson, Dr. Doug Massengill, Marcy Cooper, Rachel Ray, and So, our first speaker would be Mitch Williamson.
Thank you very much. In 2014 to 2016, a plan was developed to build two to three new elementary schools, a middle school, possible a high school. The plan is developed by the work... The plan was developed by the working administration in conjunction with the active board. That plan, and it was a work in progress, and touted by the superintendent and the board that it would alleviate the need for redistricting. When that board resigned, that plan was gone. Today, we're facing overcrowding in a middle school, aging elementary schools. The school board administration solution is redistricting and assigning students to schools, some more than 10 miles further away from their current assigned school. The reasons given overcrowding, demographics, and utilization. However, as stated by the Numerex contractors, $103 million bond and redistricting will not solve the overcrowding issue. That leaves us with utilization demographics. The utilization issue is being solved in West Pine Elementary by moving 31% of their students west and north. By not bringing in any students, that is completely negating the whole diversity issue. Over the past five years, the northern schools have had a declining attendance of up to 20%. Rather than following the former plan of enlarging West Pine Elementary to 700, accommodating projected growth for the next 10 years, your plan is to send children east and north and enlarge and improve a dying high school with money that can be better spent enlarging West Pine Elementary and West Pine Middle to satisfy current growth patterns. West Pine and Southern Middle are merely exchanging students in hopes of raising the underperforming school's proficiency scores. West Pine Middle is way over capacity, and yet you're still moving students into it. The students moving from West, or moving to West Pine are coming from Pine Bluff, which is another 11 miles away, doubling their distance of commute for no reason. All the movements will fail to rectify the four tenants you are trying to reach. Overcrowding will still be in effect and still be a factor without a new middle school. Southern Middle will have an initial spike in performance, then will taper off back to its current status, and there will still be a gap in diversity in each school. Eventually, it will be overcome when more affluent buyers move into the Pine Bluff area because land prices will be at a premium. In the past, your solutions have been...
Thank you, Mr. Williamson. If you have additional thoughts and you'd like to leave them with the board secretary, she'll see that we all get your additional comments. Thank you. Mr. Dr. Massengill?
Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Grimace, I rise today as Principal of West Pine Middle School to speak in favor of the board's guiding principles for district-wide student redistricting. I would first like to speak to the guiding principle of balance. At West Pine Middle, we have been fortunate to be perceived by the public for years to be successful based on test-determined metrics such as our school performance grade. Our school recognizes that our continued success is based as much on the factors that most affect student achievement, such as poverty, opportunity, and external forces that weigh for or against a student's ability to learn, as much as factors inside the building do. I have been concerned to hear some members of our community tout school report card grades as a lone determining factor in their decision to support a school or not. Thirty-plus years of established research, whether it be that of Cornelius, White and Harbaugh, Bernard, Wilkinson, Milburn, Fletcher, and many, many more, established unequivocally that social-economic disparities within families and communities have a greater effect on student achievement on standardized tests than any other factor, including direct instruction. When lawmakers established the law that implemented school performance grades, they implemented a system in which student proficiency counts for 80%, and a student's growth for a year's worth of instruction counts for 20%. By design, these scores measure a little more than the effects of poverty on a school's educational outcomes. Changed the formula to one where student growth is measured at an equal rate to student proficiency, long the federal and state standard for judging school effectiveness, and both West Pine Middle and Southern Middle School would receive approximately the same school performance grades. West Pine and Southern Middle have the exact same state-funded opportunities. In fact, in a parity report compiled by Principal Cooper and I, we found that Southern Middle has some programs that West Pine Middle does not, particularly as it relates to struggling students due to a lack of federal funding at West Pine Middle. Also concerning is the lack of balance in our AIG programs. Despite having more than double the number of AIG students, my students receive less service on the whole due to the lack of balance in our numbers. This is a problem that can't be remedied with a commitment to the board's guiding principle of balance. Last, and in some ways most important for the future of West Pine Middle, is building utilization. West Pine Middle has 840 students in a school that was initially built for 550 students. Next year, we are projected to grow to over 890 students and to almost 1,000 students over the next 10 years. This growth, given our current constraints, will significantly affect the staff's ability to maintain a safe and orderly environment in our school. This would be an unacceptable paradigm, given that a potential solution exists. I recognize the concern of our community members and the advocacy of parents for their children, particularly as it relates to the board's guiding principles of community and planning. However, I know that a failure to act on the concerns of balance and efficiency would be disastrous over time to the West Pine Middle community. I implore the board and the community as a whole to look towards the long-term repercussions of inaction. Thank you.
Good evening. I am Marcy Cooper, the proud principal of Southern Middle School. During the last three years, my staff and I have focused on building a foundation to make Southern Middle School a place to learn and get a great education. We do not define ourselves by a letter grade that is determined by a formula created by the state that even the current state legislature determines to be ineffective at demonstrating the quality of our schools. Currently, there are several recommendations our government is pursuing to readjust the formula being used. We are going to define ourselves by the academic progress our students are making and the culture that we are creating in our very wonderfully diverse school community. In both 2016 and 2017, we were named a Green Ribbon School by the state with positive behavior intervention and support. This year in October, we were given Model School status, the only school in Moore County to receive that honor. Through the Capturing Kids' Hearts framework, we have intentionally been focused on relationships and kindness. The change in interactions between students in the hallway has resulted in reduced suspensions and, more importantly, changed the energy and environment of our school. In the classroom, strong, positive relationships have been formed between teachers, staff members, and students. It doesn't matter who you are or where you are from, once at Southern Middle, you're ours, and we do everything in our power to make you successful and happy as you reach your highest potential. At Southern Middle, we have also worked tirelessly to continue to have a focus on individualized instruction. Our high-achieving students continue to achieve high growth while participating in compacted math classes, high school courses such as Math 1, World History, and Earth and Environmental Science, and the academically gifted instruction that can be found in a standalone class and embedded into core curriculum classes. Our performing arts groups such as chorus band and orchestra continue to receive superior ratings. Our athletic teams play at a high level while practicing good sportsmanship. While providing supports for our high-achieving students, we also provide intervention to our students who are struggling with grade-level content. During our intervention and enrichment block, students may participate in a wide variety of classes to meet their interests, such as robotics, coding, speech debates, STEM, and others. Our teachers have grit, perseverance, and passion. Our teachers and guidance counselors are constantly looking for opportunities for all students to shine. All students are challenged through individualized and targeted enriched instruction and activities. Our leadership team pays close attention to the goals that we have set for school improvement and works to ensure that progress is happening within the walls of Southern Middle School. For those of you abreast of current events, tonight with the NCAA tournament, you are aware of the impact of culture on success. The Cinderella team of Texas Tech is playing for the national championship. They began their season with a cultural change and now are making history for their program. We believe that Southern Middle is also laying the foundations that will improve the future success of all of our students and our school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dear Board of Education members, Dr. Grimace, and members of the community, I'm here today because I have heard the concerns growing about the county's redistricting process. Members of our community have concerns about the letter grades that have been associated with the schools that may be affected. Unfortunately, the assigning of grades has served only to label schools regardless of any obstacles that occur outside of the school's realms. Mark Johnson, the North Carolina Superintendent, can be quoted on the DPI website as saying, "I can tell you this information while important, but it cannot tell you the entire story of a school." I currently teach what labeled, what is labeled as a D school. I teach at Robbins Elementary. The letter assigned to us unfortunately brings us misunderstanding and assumptions about what it's like to be a Robbins Rocket. But what it does not tell our community is how welcoming our school is, how hardworking our staff is, and how indescribably amazing our students are. We exemplify R E S, respect, engage, and succeed in everything we do. At Robbins, we are developing a passion for reading and making great strides in our STEM program. Our students are developing both internal and external skills that will help them overcome many of the obstacles that face them when they leave our building. Every adult within our building silently has a motto of "See a need and feel a need", and we work together as a village. We looked, we look after each of our students as if they are our own. My students come into my classroom at the beginning of each year and are told that they have been adopted as my personal kid from that moment on, whether they like it or not. We view our kids as whole individuals and address all the elements that come along with that, regardless of whether they are academic-based or not. We prepare our students for life, not for a test. If we are doing so much, you may wonder why are we still a D school? A study conducted at Stanford University analyzed school districts and gathered information stating that oral and academic English proficiency can take five to seven consistent years to become evident. As a school with a high ESL population, instead of looking at us, we can look our eyes towards the schools that we feed into, Elise Middle and Northmore High. Elise is a C school with a score that has consistently grown and exceeded expectation over the last few years. Northmore is a B school, and it has a score and a graduate, graduation rate that is something worth bragging about. The hard work at Robbins, interwoven with the hard work from the teachers at Elise and Northmore, is showing that our students are growing. So I stand here today, honored to say that I teach at Robbins Elementary, home of some of the most respectful, engaged, and successful students in North Carolina, and I proudly have my kids that are currently living a life of, a legacy of learning as Elise Bearcats and maturing the Mustang Way at Northmore. I believe that all the teachers throughout Moore County will continue to do as we all have always done. We will continue to embrace love and help every child that comes into our room as they become our kids, and we hope that you, the board, and the community can believe in us to continue to do so, regardless of what letter grade the state may place upon us.
Thank you.
Ms. David, before you start, I want to ask our next five speakers to come on down to the front row. In this order, it would be Nate Holler, Ashley Green, Tanya Wagner, Katie All, and Mandy Nall. Maybe the rain will subside a little bit before you start.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
I attended the Area 3 meeting on Wednesday night, and I was able to speak to the people that drew the maps. I was speaking to the gentleman that was in charge of drawing the maps. He mentioned, I asked him specifically about the traffic circle issues. He mentioned that he was not even fully aware of the traffic circle, the backups that we see every day as we come through the circle. I don't understand how someone that is in charge of mapping our schools is not familiar with the county, the most difficult traffic area in our county. Currently, students that live in Village Acres and Number 6, that sit north of the traffic circle, are zoned to go to West Pine Middle, which allows us parents to travel through, down Longleaf or Spring Lake, to Gun Club to 211 and avoid the traffic circle. Obviously, they have not considered what, what mess the circle is going to create. The increased school traffic will cause issues for everyone that uses the circle. Has anybody spoken to the Village of Pinehurst or the DOT regarding the traffic mess this is going to potentially create? Does a traffic...
Ms. David, could you speak more into the microphone?
I'm sorry.
The rain is loud.
Let me find where it was on my thing. Does a traffic study need to be conducted before this redistricting is put into place? For comparison's sake, I did a test run the other day. I can be at West Pine Middle from my house in 10 minutes. Even though I sit only a half a mile further from Southern Middle, it takes me 23 minutes to get there with the traffic circle at the current rate that it's at. This fact, this does not factor in the increased traffic flow that this will create for the circle. I am a full-time working parent. My husband is in the military and rarely home, which, I'm not asking for sympathy. We function just fine as we are. However, a 23-minute commute to, to my daughter's school is going to create an issue for me and other people that live in this area. With having, with having heard before that parent involvement in, in the middle schools is a problem, I think, I think the distance that you're sending children and the time, not just the distance, but the time travel, that you're sending children to these schools needs to be considered. It makes it very difficult for me, as a currently-involved parent, to remain involved when a round trip from my home to my daughter's school and back is an hour long.
Thank you. Speak loudly, please.
Good evening. I'm Nate Holler, a seventh grader at Southern Middle and a proud dragon. I've heard a lot about Southern Middle over the last few weeks. I've heard about parents who do not want their child to come to Southern Middle because they deem it a failing school. However, I walk through the doors of Southern Middle five times a week, and this is what I see. First of all, I see teachers who care. Every day before school, there's always an abundance of teachers and other staff members in the halls, ready to say good morning, so that every student starts the day off right. Students always have someone to talk to when in need, whether it be one of our vice principals, a guidance counselor, or Ms. Cooper herself. There's always an adult ready to listen. Teachers are also very involved in parent communication. Many teachers send out emails every week or use the Remind app to notify parents of tests and quizzes early. Students are given time to complete assignments as well. Various teachers allow students to stay after school and make corrections on quizzes and tests, and students are allowed to attend working lunch for different teachers and complete overdue assignments. We also have the option of Saturday School, which is provided several weeks during the spring semester. I see how Southern Middle sets up, sets students up for the future. Our arts teachers are amazing, whether it's band, orchestra, choir, or art. Students can find their talent at SMS. Various after-school clubs, such as debate and Battle of the Books, apply factors like literature and public speaking to foster engagement with other students, academic competition, and the natural aptitude of individual students. Our athletics teams and coaches are experienced. For instance, we've had many teams win conference championships over the last few years. They are also disciplined, providing structure and encouragement towards good grades, as well as a feeling of purpose and belonging on the team and at the school. I also see students who want to learn. Many students are quite engaged in learning and focused on excellence. For these reasons and many more, I ask that you take a glimpse at Southern Middle the way I and many other staff members, teachers, parents, and students see it, as an extraordinary place to learn. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Ashley Green, and I am a proud Southern Pines primary parent. My son's in first grade, and he attended kindergarten there as well last year. We love our school, and we adore the staff. I know the thought of attending Southern Pines schools evokes fear and uneasiness in a lot of parents, and I really wanted to come here tonight to tell all of those parents that those feelings are absolutely unwarranted. When we first moved to Southern Pines, I was asked time and time again which charter or private school I would choose for my child. There was just a general assumption that SPP would not even be considered. I heard all of the bad things about the school, and I will admit that I was nervous about sending my sweet boy there. What I came to realize, however, was the naysayers had absolutely no personal experience at either the primary or the elementary schools. All of the stories I heard were rumors without concrete sources. I finally managed to find two friends on social media who had children attending SPP, and I asked them for their opinions, and of course, they had nothing but wonderful things to say. My son is intelligent. He's learning the exact same things as all of his buddies at places like the Academy of Moore and EDS and all of the other public schools here in the county. I know this because I've asked my close friends what their children are doing in the classroom. I couldn't be happier with his education, but I also couldn't be happier about the fact that he goes to a school that is representative of the real world. His best friend in class is a little... His best friend in class is a little boy who he would probably never cross paths with in life if it weren't for being in the classroom. And guess what? They make pinky promises together, they tell fart jokes, they do all the normal things that little boys in 1st grade do. Is my child privileged? Heck, yes, he is. I will say, however, that my son has learned compassion and empathy on a level that is remarkable for a 7-year-old little boy. Not everyone in class has the same things that he might have, and he's a better person for it. He doesn't even notice it. People are concerned about the achievement gap, and I get that, and my kid has noticed it, and we talk about it. We talk about being someone's champion. We talk about being encouraging, and you know what? He will come home from class, and he will brag about his classmates and his friends when he notices them making strides in learning, when they're getting better in math. He will come and tell me about it. I didn't teach him to be that way. That is the loving environment of that school. It truly hurts my heart to hear people badmouth a school and the faculty and the children that I care so deeply about. And I'm not trying to make anybody feel bad about themselves tonight. I'm coming here from a place of love, but more importantly, I'm coming here from a place of pride. When my son first started kindergarten at SPP, I was almost embarrassed to tell people that he went to school there because I was just sick of the awkward judgment that I received, and now I can't sing its praises enough to anybody who will listen. So thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Tanya Wagner, and I am the proud principal of Southern Pines Primary School. On behalf of our school community, I would like to share just a few of the many reasons that our students are thriving at SPP. We are very proud of all the work that our students are doing. I am truly amazed by the way they are able to persevere when faced with challenges and by the love and compassion that they show one another daily. Here are just a few examples of the ways that they are thriving. Our overall reading proficiency increased 23 percentage points last year. Our overall discipline incidence decreased by 25% last year. We won first place at the Young People's Fine Arts Festival this year, where we were up against K-5 schools across the county. We have received green ribbon PBIS recognition at the state level for the past three years. I am privileged to work alongside a dedicated group of educators who will do whatever it takes to make sure the needs of all students are met. They understand that education is about so much more than academics and work to help students develop the social, emotional, communication, and academic skills that they need to be successful citizens. They make learning fun for students, and in turn, students want to come to school. Of our instructional staff, the average number of years at SPP is 11 years, and the average number of years in education is 18. SPP exceeded expected growth last year in reading comprehension for E-VOS with 14 out of 15 teachers meeting or exceeding growth. We offer STEAM Lab as one of our weekly specials classes, and during this time, students are able to collaborate while using their creativity and imagination to solve problems and complete projects in science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. And through a generous grant from the Public Education Foundation at Moore County, our digital integration facilitator is working with students at our school and at West End Elementary to pilot First Lego League Junior. We also are able to provide a double dose of reading instruction daily for all students who are not on grade level. We are lucky to have such supportive parents. Although our PTA may be small, it is mighty. On any given day, you can find parents volunteering in the classroom or somewhere within the school or having lunch with their child. Their love and dedication for our school and all students is evident in all their hard work. This year, they were able to raise over $16,000 for our little school through Fun Run, and they're going to use that for classroom grants. And our parent volunteers offer seasonal weekly gardening classes in our school garden. We are also very lucky to have a school community that supports us in making sure the needs of all students are met. We have over 30 literacy council volunteers who serve as reading buddies and work with our 2nd grade students. We have local churches who partner to mentor our students, and many community organizations work to help our students. In conclusion, I am honored to be a member of the Southern Pines Primary Family. SPP is truly a great place to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie Ong.
Good evening. My name is Katie Ong. I'm a military spouse, and we've lived in Southern Pines for seven years. My three children have attended Southern Pines Elementary, Southern Middle, and now they're at Pinecrest. I have friends who live all around Moore County, Aberdeen, Southern Pines, Pinehurst, Whispering Pines, and my extended family are all from Robbins and Carthage. I have attended the meetings at Southern Middle, and I've listened to the voices and rumblings. I've read all the comments on social media. I want you to know that although there's been some vocal unhappiness with the process and the so far draft outcomes, that is not the norm of what I'm hearing, and typically, individuals who are content will not go out of their way to attend meetings at 6:30 on a rainy night during the tournament. So I'd like to speak for them. The majority of parents I know with children across all three school levels, elementary to high school, and across Pinehurst and Southern Pines, say they understand the need for redistricting, that this is the right time, and they understand there will be some discomfort with both the process and the outcome. But they're keeping an open mind, they're staying informed by attending the meetings, and they're providing constructive input as has been asked by the school board. Based on my conversations with friends and family, I'd like to reinforce the following thoughts. Our children are resilient. A change in school building will not break them. They may have new assignments and will be moved with a whole sector of their cohort, and they will settle in and be fine. Number two, our children are watching, and they'll follow your lead. If you're inflexible, angry, and defiant, it will affect how students transition. If you're flexible, optimistic, and open-minded, your children will be too. And lastly, change is not bad, it's just different. All is not perfect now, and all will not be perfect with new school assignments. There will be inconveniences, but we know that change is needed. If your child does move schools, get involved with that new school, meet the teachers, join the PTA, and help with school events. You'll be more connected, and the transition will be a more positive experience if you do. As we can see from the earlier staff, students, and programs, and speakers recognized tonight, we see that there are great things happening in all the schools in this county. And lastly, I have a senior at Pinecrest who went to Southern Middle, and he got into Duke, so have no fear.
One moment, Ms. Nall. If I might stop you one moment. We have only four additional speakers after this, so instead of taking a break and having to come back later, we're going to ask, based on recommendation from Chair Wallin Miller, that they go ahead and speak at this time as well. So that would be Cal Castleberry, Kim Bullard, Dr. Dale Bowie, Dante Poole, if you'd like to come on forward.
Okay. Good evening. We are here tonight, representative of Robbins Elementary School. We are the kindergarten team. I'm here to share with you all the great things that happen at Robbins Elementary every single day. Let me begin by saying that I am a Robbins Rocket. I'm also an Elise Bearcat. I'm also a Northmore Mustang. The pride I feel for Northern Moore County runs deep and stands firm. I've taught elementary school in Moore County for 20 years, beginning at Carthage Elementary, then High Falls, and now I'm proud to say that I've come full circle and have returned to the place where my love of learning started many years ago, Robbins Elementary. Have you heard about Robbins Elementary STEM? Robbins Elementary has its own STEM lab loaded with every piece of equipment, tool, computer program, any engineer would love to have. Our STEM lab is operated by a certified teacher and digital integration facilitator who is always abreast of the latest and greatest in digital education. Our students have weekly experiences with robots, circuits, 3D printers, drones, Lego kits, Osmos, virtual reality carts, STEM picture books, iPads, Chromebooks. We also have an all-girl team called the Giga Girls who are experts in coding and engineering. Students at Robbins have the opportunity to design, create, display, and present 21st century's learning skills necessary for life today and tomorrow. Did you know that Robbins Elementary is the home to the, to Moore County Schools' only dual-language program? Students in Robbins' dual-language program spend 50% of their time at school in English and 50% of their time in Spanish. As of right now, there are two dual-language classrooms per grade level, K-3, and next year, the program will expand to 4th grade. Brain research on dual-language proves that these students are not only outscore their peers in standardized testing, but also have a brain that is quicker, nimbler, and more resistant to Alzheimer's and other forms of dementia. Research also shows that the brains of bilingual people are more developed in areas that organize and process speech. Bilingual people are more marketable for future jobs and earn at least $10,000 a year more than those who are not. We do that at Robbins every day. Come and join us at any time for our, we have International Night, STEM Night, Fall Festival, Back to School Night, Community Night, Fine Arts Night, school-wide talent shows, that's just to name a few. I know I only have three minutes, so obviously, I can't get to all the greatness that occurs day in and day out at Robbins. However, I can say that test scores do not define us. So if we must be categorized by test scores, and if you happen to hear ugly rumors that Robbins Elementary is a low-performing school, you can rest assured that the teachers, the custodians, the specialists, the maintenance workers, the bus drivers, the cafeteria ladies, the psychologists, the administration, the parents, the community members, and especially the students at Robbins Elementary do not believe rumors and work hard day in and day out to rise above.
Thank you.
This is my luck. You guys hear me? Teachers are doing a phenomenal job. No one's going to dispute that. However, we voted on a bond referendum to build schools that would fit our communities. School Board's guiding principle of balance for this effort places building utilization, program opportunities, and student demographics factors as priorities. Dr. Grimacy stated that building utilization is an operational variable in this plan. There's very little evidence of work to support this. What is available, though, is undeniable evidence that the resorting effort is not about building utilization. If it was, the new Southern Elementary approval design would not be opening its doors to an overcapacity student body, while Pinehurst Elementary is designed to accommodate a growing student body, as all schools should have been designed to do. The reason this doesn't make sense is because Dr. Grimacy and the Board's primary concern is to balance rates and test scores in Moore County instead of building community schools that accommodate growing populations for the next 10 to 20 years, which is what most of us here thought we voted on, and we're being taxed on, by the way. Allow me to shed light on some interesting moments here. One effort started back in February 16, 2018, when Doctors Metcalf and Grimacy and Ms. Phillips conducted the Pinecrest High School Student Unity Forum. The executive summary states, quote, "Two subgroups adjourned and reconvened as a single group with a former Southern student and a former West Pine student seated at each two-person table. They reviewed the following information that illustrates the district differences between their respective middle schools," end quote. It is interesting, the information they were given shows only racial composition between SMS and WPMS and the percentage of free and reduced lunches. This is where Dr. Grimacy's thinly-veiled racial redistribution effort begins under the false flag of unity and diversity. This also supports what was said two months ago, February 14, at a faculty meeting at WPMS, where Grimacy told the teachers present that he was, quote, "taking 100 to 200 white kids and moving them to SMS. This will balance the ratio of white kids to about 63%, which is what it is at the high school," end quote. Fast forward to April 1, Central Office rollout, Draft One, Laura Evans, from numerics at the 56-minute mark, said, "In regards to minority representation, we just reported, but we're not going to do anything with it." However, later, she says, "The three categories on our slide highlighted were minority, utilization, and proficiency." She said, "What we like to focus on is in each column, we look at which school has a maximum minority percentage and the minimum. What's that range? 51-point range here. That's not very balanced if you've got a big fat range like that." Then she said, "We're reducing the minority percentage, which is a step in the direction we want to go. We do not want racial isolation." Us parents want to see the substantiating documentation supporting the use of demographics and proficiency information in resorting processes. As I say at the NCMS meeting, there is no study I know that dictates the color of skin or a parent's income having a correlation to a student's ability to learn, nor will moving them from one district change their ethnicity or their parent's income. So why are these variables being used? On April 2, at NCMS, I asked Dr. Grimacy this question. He replied, "They're not being used, they're after-the-fact variables to measure success." If so, then why do you also state that if a school's minority percentage increases during redistricting, that's a bad thing?
Thank you, Mr. Castleberry. If you have additional information you'd like to leave with the Board clerk, she'll make sure the Board gets it. We appreciate your thoughts. Next up, Kim Bullard.
I've come to you tonight to speak on behalf of the low-performing schools in Moore County and more specifically Robbins Elementary. There seems to be some negative connotations that have been circulating on social media and throughout our community about the redistricting plan and concerns about students that may have to move from a higher-performing school to a potentially lower-performing school. Unfortunately, our state has chosen to grade schools on one single measure, test scores. While we all understand the importance of accountability, we cannot make assumptions about a school based solely on a day or two of testing. Robbins Elementary has a very diverse student population unlike many of the other schools in our county. While we are very proud and celebrate this diversity, it brings some challenges. These challenges can be identified with our proficiency levels on end-of-grade tests. Yes, we have work to do. Our teachers are constantly reflecting on what strategies can be implemented to meet the needs of our students. Just like all other schools, we will not settle for anything less than the best for our students. We provide students with the opportunity to learn through the engineering process. Teachers and students at Robbins were one of the first schools in the district to provide STEM as an elective. This has been recognized throughout the state as a model for how to integrate technology to support the North Carolina standards. We have had teams of teachers and administrators from all across the state visiting our classrooms to learn from us. The feedback we hear so often is how amazing our students and teachers are. Our students have had opportunities to learn firsthand about cultures from around the world. They have had the opportunity to interact with teachers and students from Venezuela, Costa Rica, Russia, Colombia, Mexico, Puerto Rico, Dominican Republic, Guatemala, Yemen, Zimbabwe, and Peru. Our students truly know what it means to be a global citizen. At Robbins Elementary, we have a staff dedicated to the students and families we serve. Our staff has to overcome the negativity that is associated with being deemed a low-performing school. They hear comments like, "You're not doing your job. Your students must not be smart," and are forced to defend their reasons for staying at a school like that. As if the job that any teacher had is not hard enough, our staff has to be thick-skinned and stick up for themselves because so many are ready to jump to conclusions based on a letter grade. Instead, we take all children the way they come to us. We love them, celebrate their diversity, and make sure that we are providing them with a well-rounded education. So while some outsiders may want to define us by our score, we know that we are so much more. At Robbins Elementary, we have a dedicated staff that is truly in education for the right reasons. We believe in each other and are willing to do whatever it takes to meet the needs of all children. We face criticism and always rise above, not letting this dampen our spirit or our commitment. We do not make excuses because we know that education is so much more than what we can measure on a standardized test. What you will find at Robbins Elementary is a group of people that love children unconditionally, a group of educators that will give their life to protect children from harm while in their care.
Thank you, Ms. Bullard. If you have other information, please leave it with the Board clerk.
Good evening, madam chair, Dr. Grimacy, school board, and guests. I'm appreciative for the opportunity to speak. My name is Dr. Dale Bowie. I'm the principal of Southern Pines Elementary School and have been for the last five years. I want to share for the public record some of the great things that are taking place at our school. We take pride in the fact that we are a very diverse community. We serve students of all ability levels and strive to help them be successful. As evidenced by our school's improvement plan, we have a schedule that allows for an intervention period. Students receive multiple interventions during this time or acceleration depending on the student. Our school has a talented group of staff members that serve on our student support team. We identify students that are performing below grade level and meet with the parents and the teacher to target the specific needs of the student and provide assistance. We also work to identify advanced students and accelerate, I'm sorry, our teachers differentiate instructions based on the individual learning needs of our students. The hard work of our faculty and staff contributed to our school exceeding expected growth as measured by E-VOS and the North Carolina Department of Public Education. Our school was one of eight schools in Moore County that exceeded growth for 2017, 2018. We have an active PTA, great community partners in the Southern Pines Literacy Council, Southern Pines Parks and Rec, Bronson Memorial, the Country Bookshop, the Boys and Girls Club of the Sand Hills, among others. I simply want to make it very clear that no one is working any harder for students than the staff at Southern Pines Elementary School. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Dante Poole.
Good evening. In 2014, I was faced with the challenge of developing a plan-- of a school community and fight for the success of our students. My first task as a leader was to arm the building with staff who believed in our students. And I spent that summer finding the great people that are in our building right now. I needed tough-minded, gritty teachers who were crazy enough to invest in a vision that was bigger than test scores and state letter grades. We needed a whole-child approach that would address the educational, relational, mental health, behavioral, and even spiritual needs of our students. When you have a history of failure, it becomes much more than what you do. Sometimes you begin to believe it's who you are. So we began to focus on the climate and culture for both students and staff because real change happens from the inside out. I remember watching a video of the late Rita Pearson about being a champion for kids. She talked about a mantra that she began saying with her students about them being somebody, and our school has adopted it as our Tiger Declaration. We begin every day in every assembly talking about, "We're somebody. Somebody when we came, better somebody when we leave. We're responsible for the education we get here. We have things to do, people to impress, places to go. We're powerful and strong because we're somebody." Not only did this begin to seep into the psyche of our students, but it began to radically change the perceptions of the adults in our school community. Hmm, every child, every day, is the tiger way. And so what we have done is in every newsletter, in every letter home, in every printed advertisement, weekly, school phone messages, email, et cetera, all have our visions they've incorporated. Mindset changes have led to a 50 percent decrease in our discipline, and we are committed to keeping students in class so they can have access to a quality education. We have grown from one AIG student to 32 AIG students and have decreased our teacher turnover a whole bunch. We are the 2018 District Battle Book Champions in fourth place in the region. We are Green Ribbon Award winners for PBIS, and we send home summer learning kits, not just for reading, but for math, too. I believe that our current trajectory has everything to do with the development of a culture that refuses to accept the circumstances of a child's challenges as the child's identity and consequently the identity of our school. (applause)
And that concludes our public address.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. Let's take a five-minute recess.
We have grown from one AIG student to 32 AIG students and have decreased our teacher turnover a whole bunch. We are the 2018 District Ballot Book Champions in fourth place in the region. We are green ribbon awarded winners for PBIS, and we send home summer learning kits not just for reading, but for math, too. I believe that our current trajectory has everything to do with the development of a culture that refuses to accept the circumstances of a child's challenges as the child's identity and consequently the identity of our students. Thank you.
And that concludes our public address.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. Let's take a five-minute recess. We'll be back in five minutes. I do want to thank all those that were here for public comment. It was good to hear from the community and also from parents and staff members. We're glad to have them here. They had all left. A little bit quieter in here for those of you who are watching. The next item is our board action on the budget for 2019-2020.
Madam Chairman, can you hear me okay? Everybody hear me okay? Louder, louder, okay, all right. Madam Chairman, I stumbled on these slides last week. If you don't mind, I'll just offer my formal recommendation for the school board's proposed 2019-20 Moore County Schools budget. You've had that in your possession since I presented it last month, but last week, and on these two slides, I just want to be clear. I present to you for final consideration tonight a budget, a total budget of $125,288,100, which includes State Fund One, $75,500,000; Local Expense Fund Two, $34,038,100; Federal Fund Three, $7,400,000; Capital Expense Fund Four, $750,000; School Nutrition Fund Five, $5,485,000; Local Operations Fund Eight, $2,115,000. That budget would require a request to the county as follows on Slide 26. Catherine, if you could just switch me to the next one, we'll scroll down. Thank you. Local expense for operations, $32,298,100. One-time funding, $974,100, for a total of $33,272,200. A charter school, a supplemental charter school fund that would account for the charter school children that have never attended Moore County schools, $1,260,000. Capital expense, $750,000 for reoccurring and $750,000 for one-time funding with a supplemental request of $1,900,000, for a total of $3,400,000. And digital learning, $900,000, for a total request of $35,208,100 for reoccurring expense, $1,724,100 for one-time funding, and total for supplemental requests, $1,900,000, for a total request for local funding for next year of $38,832,200. If you have any questions, I'm going to have to run up and get the rest of my PowerPoint, but I'm at your service.
Board members, what questions or comments do you have?
Madam Chair.
Well, I guess I'll take a motion first.
That's what I'm getting ready to do.
Go for it.
I move the budget be approved as presented.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments about the proposed budget?
I have a few comments I'd like to make. We've just, we're getting ready to pass a very significant budget request tonight, and it's a request that deserves some comment. As the budget goes to our county commissioners for their consideration, I feel we must note that every single item included in the request is an item that is clearly needed for the continuation or support of programs already within our schools. We are not asking for new programs or enhanced supports. We are asking to maintain the programs that already exist within Moore County and to provide the personnel necessary to make them all work. From adding teachers back to our fourth through eighth grades, to ensuring psychologists, school resource officers, and counselors are there when needed, the increased manpower is essential to our schools. Equally important in making our schools run efficiently, our classified personnel are in need of a salary scale and equitable salaries to keep the Moore County schools competitive with other county government jobs. It is past time that these positions be treated with the respect they deserve. Now, we all know that our budget request includes a large increase, but I think we can agree that we do not go into this lightly. Our commissioners want to know what is happening in our schools. They want to support the exceptional programs and services that are provided, and they have the ability to make this happen. Whether or not this entire request will be funded is yet to be seen, but it is clearly up to us as a Board of Education to put these needs before our commissioners and ask them to take care of them. If we don't present what is necessary, then the commissioners have no way to know. We must also encourage our stakeholders in Moore County to let the commissioners know that this budget has your support. Let them know that you want to see programming continue, you want to see class sizes shrink, and you want our children to feel safe and secure no matter what it takes.
Thank you, Ms. Carter. Any other questions or comments?
I agree with what Libby has said, that this budget reflects our school mission of creating safe learning environment and providing knowledge, skills, and abilities that our students would need for the future, as well as support our strategic initiatives with all key domains and all of the other itemized things that Libby said. I agree with 100% that this is a 100% comprehensive budget that is needed for our school district.
Anything else? I provided comments last week, and I stand by them, and I stand by what Ms. Carter said, so thank you very much. There is a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven-zero. Thank you, Dr. Grimacy. Thank you, board members. Next item on the agenda is board comments, and I would like to take the opportunity to reverse order. Normally, I go last. I'd like to go first today. There are some comments I had. I'm sorry that all of our listeners have left. Hopefully, they're watching online or will watch at another time because there are some issues that I wanted to address. I really wanted to first thank everybody who came and spoke today. It means a lot to the Board of Education that folks are paying attention and engaging in this very important process that we have in front of us for redistricting. We have received a lot of questions in the last week about redistricting, and while we've answered many at the two input meetings that we had, and even in the month before that at the three informational forums that we had, and at the PTA meetings we were invited to, we also answered a lot of questions. We know that there are more questions from the emails that we've gotten and also from questions that have come in on the portal. Staff I know are looking at the questions that have come in from the portal, and I wanted to let people know that I was looking at the ones that were coming to the Board of Education and looking at creating responses for those. My hope is that we can create and update the frequently asked questions that we have on the current website for MCS and answer questions as they come in through that format. Please be patient with us. We do not respond to emails right away, and partly we want to make sure that we have the right answer and that we are directing you to the right resource. Regarding the input sessions last week and coming up again in May, these are designed to gather the most amount of individual input on the current drafts that we have. These are fashioned after charrettes, which are used as a planning tools for towns and communities. Both the Department of Transportation and the Village of Pinehurst have used this process recently in our own communities, and I have attended many of them. We did adjust the format a little bit in the past week to have some question-and-answer time, which helped get through many of the questions with a large group, and we did that, I thought, very efficiently. So thank you to Dr. Grimacy and Dr. Lockfair for handling a lot of those questions so quickly. I do want to remind you that the school board is charged with the effective and efficient operations of the schools, and this includes reviewing attendance line decisions from time to time. The authority to do so is given to us by the North Carolina General Statute 115(c)(366) and is not voted on by the community. Four new elementary schools are opening over the next three years to ease overcrowding and replace aging facilities in Moore County. Each of these schools will be home to 800 students, and three of these four schools are in new locations. With new capacity and increasing enrollment in the southern part of the county, coupled with declining enrollment in the northern parts of the county, the school board has determined that a whole district approach to redistricting is necessary in order to make the best use of each of our schools. In approving the guiding principles for the redistricting process, the board also determined that improved demographic balance is desirable where feasible. While not a primary driver, we will review data to ensure we are moving demographic balance in the right direction and not making it worse. The school board believes that more balanced approach are a benefit to the whole community and supports better outcomes for all students. There are numerous citations to support this conclusion, and we heard a few of them today, including the Coleman Report and special guidance that we have received, as well as, I'm sorry, as well as research studies. I'm compiling a list, and we'll have it available for those interested. Finally, I understand that student assignment planning is stressful and disruptive to families, and I get it. I, too, remember the feeling when Academy Heights closed. While my kids weren't quite school-aged at the time, that is where I had planned to send my children. Then a few years later, the school board did away with year-round schooling for budgetary reasons, and my own children moved schools. As a reminder, I was on the school board when that decision was made, and I had to make that decision as well. So I moved my own children so that the whole community could benefit. So I have lived this, and I will tell you, while it was challenging for a few months for one of my children, the other one barely noticed. And in the end, we overcame any challenges and have made many new friends and have had wonderful new experiences to show through. So if nothing else, I hope you leave here knowing that we understand where you are coming from. Both Ms. Caldwell and I are currently in the same position as many parents here in the county. Our children are either moving or know that some of their friends will move, so we get it. I ask you to trust the process, to continue to show up, engage, ask questions you need to ask, but please be respectful and polite of one another and to the staff, and be patient as we answer your questions. At the end of the day, I hope you learned what I did, that all of our schools are wonderful, caring environments for our children to learn and grow, and I was excited to hear about some of that here today. They each have their own success stories. They each have their challenges. Staff at the school level are intently focused on providing the best education to each and every child every day and know what their children need. The school board is committed to ensuring that the resource supports to help the school-level staff do just that. That means we work really, really hard to get these budgets together, to look at resources, to look at facilities, and to find the tools that staff need to really do the work each and every day for all of our students. And I'd also like to mention the work that Mr. Dennison and Dr. Brown do in advocating on behalf of Moore County students and staff on the state level at the legislature. We may not always agree on how to get this accomplished, but I hope you know that we are doing this for each and every member of this wonderful community. Thank you. Those are my board comments. Are there any other board comments?
I'd like to ditto that. I used very well said, and some of the stuff that I was going to say tonight was, you were on it, so I'm not going to repeat myself, but I did want to mention I got to go to the Military Forum. Betty, I believe you were there as well. And it was wonderful, and I learned so much. I don't know if many of you know, but I do have a EC child, and I didn't know half the stuff that Fort Bragg provided, so it blew my mind away, and I just hope, and I thank Rolly, because I know we're going to implement some of the things that we learned at that meeting and help our military families, especially our exceptional children. So it was just wonderful. I learned so much. Just wanted to share that and thank her. She always puts on this wonderful, if you guys ever get to go, it's just wonderful.
Thank you. Ms. Thompson, anything else? Yes, Mr. Dennison.
I have some comments tonight. Unfortunately, people aren't here. First thing I wanted to, and this is all going to be information, first thing I wanted to do was let the public know that our students have received several Academy and ROTC scholarships. In the past six years, Moore County school students have received 17 Academy appointments. That's Naval Academy, Military Academy, Coast Guard Academy, Air Force Academy, and 32 ROTC scholarships. For instance, this year, we have, I'm going to read the names off, Tony Dugan from Union Pine High School, Army ROTC, North Carolina State; Peter Ekman, US Union Pine High School, Navy ROTC; Georgia Tech; Allison Harville, Pinecrest High School, Air Force ROTC; Davidson; Sophie Hurdle, Pinecrest High School; West Point for Air Force Academy, Air Force ROTC or Army ROTC, and she's waiting to hear from the Naval Academy before she makes her decision; Caleb Kempler, Union Pine High School, United States Air Force Academy; Ethan Aug, and you heard his mom earlier, Pinecrest High School, Army ROTC, Duke University; Tristan Fowler, Pinecrest High School, United States Air Force Academy; Nikki Shook, Snook, Union Pine High School, Army ROTC, BMI; Jeff Jensen, Pinecrest High School, Army ROTC, Virginia Tech; Olivia Longfellow, Pinecrest High School, Navy ROTC, and waiting on response from the US Naval Academy; Haley Kessel, Union Pine High School, Army ROTC, High Point University. And I also have received several questions that I wanted to address somewhat tonight. Questions asking, what are Moore County schools and the community doing to help our students? So I'm going to start by letting you know, the first group I'm going to talk about is the Sandhills Farm Bank of Central and Eastern North Carolina in Southern Pines, what they're doing for our students. The Food Bank in Moore County, 1,100 backpacks weekly for our students. A backpack is really a backpack, and students receive food for six meals over the weekend. The Food Bank provides approximately 325 after-school meals each day for our children at the Boys and Girls Club sites in Aberdeen and Southern Pines and at Trinity AMZion Church in Southern Pines. Stop Summer Hunger Campaign that helps address food insecurity for these children that benefit from free and reduced meals during the school year. This is in the summertime, obviously. The total number of children served depends on the number of commitments received from the community. Aberdeen Recreation and the Boys and Girls Club provide a summer program, and the Food Bank will provide breakfast and lunches as requested. They donate non-conforming food for food pantries at High Falls Elementary, Aberdeen Elementary, New Century Middle, and Sandhills Farm Life. Now, the other question that was asked about Moore County schools, what is Moore County schools doing for our students? And these are just a few things. Our primary purpose is to educate our students. Our goal is to ensure that all our students graduate well-prepared for college or career. Everything we do from PK through 12th grade should lead us towards that goal. A few examples of what we are doing. We're providing technology for all our students. We are not there yet, but we're making good progress. For example, six years ago, only 40% of our students at Southern Middle School had a computer with Internet access at home. Imagine those trying to compete with those kids that already had it. Today, our middle and high school students have a device and Internet access, and this is really leveling the playing field. STEM camps during the summer, summer reading camps, instructional coaches that are Title One schools, mentor for our struggling students, Saturday classes for our ATRIC students, robotics for all grades, building new schools that we're doing now. We have active advisory groups for teacher, students, key communicators of various ethnic groups. We have established a Military Family Council and hired a military family liaison to work with our military families. We are enhancing our already strong career and technical education programs. We provide numerous AP and honors courses, and approximately 50% of our juniors and seniors are taking a college or college and career promise program free of charge at Sandhills Community College. And they're learning, saving their parents a lot of money by earning the credit if they're going to a four-year school. We have a strong arts, sports, and other exterior curriculum programs. We advocate for our employees to be paid equitable pay. We implement school performance plans. We schedule professional development for our teachers and staff. We are advocates for providing an adequate staff of nurses, psychologists, school resource officers, social workers, and counselors. We provide food service, daycare, pre-K programs, and our central staff is committed to supporting our principals, teachers, custodians, food service personnel, bus drivers, teacher aides, and all our staff to enable them to do the best job they could possibly do to help us reach our goal. This list is just a sample of what we do to help our students graduate well-prepared for college or career. If any of our actions are not leading us towards that goal, then why do it? Again, our goal is to ensure all our children graduate well-prepared for college or career. Most of you have children in our schools and want what is best for them. I, too, have children. I have 12,700 children, and I need to think of what's best for all of them.
Thank you, Mr. Dennison. Dr. Brown or Mr. Cunningham?
I can't follow that one. I know.
Thank you, Mr. Dennison.
I'd just say I enjoyed the Teacher of the Year banquet last week. It's always a highlight and look forward to the Teacher Assistant banquet. Always a highlight.
No comment. Yes, all right. Is there a motion to?
May I?
Yes.
Move that the meeting be adjourned.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven-zero. Thank you.